Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers, and there is also an automatic external defibrillator that's available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we're going to begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and take a couple of items. So with that, if we could have roll call for the county board of commissioners?
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Madam Chair.
Here. The first is a public hearing. It's a Class C licensed beer, wine, and distilled spirits on and off sale for the Forgot Store, DBA Junior's Forgot Store Bar and Grill at 11909 Calhoun Road. Manager application, Dennis Matheson, of 3325 North 58th Street in Omaha 68104. This is the public hearing, and we may take action after I close the public hearing. Good morning.
Good morning. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Danielle Dring. I'm an attorney at Smith-Slewski at 8712 West Dodge Road. We're asking today that the board approve a liquor license application for transfer of ownership for this bar that's located in the same location has been for approximately 50 years. There's just going to be a shift in ownership. Our client, Mr. Mathes, has had other liquor licenses before the board before he has been approved for those. He's also been approved for liquor licenses in other locations within the city of Omaha. So we're just asking that you approve this liquor license today so that he can take over ownership and continue with his business.
Okay, thank you. This is the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against during the hearing? No, oh, Commissioner Duda?
Not really for or against. Just a question. My kids were there Thursday night when the previous owner closed it down. What changes will a customer coming in see under your ownership?
Most of all, just to clean it up a little bit, open the restaurant. Restaurant hasn't been open for I don't know how long, and to offer that for the neighborhood there, and just to fix it up a little bit and hopefully build it up.
I'm glad to hear the restaurant won't be reopening. That's a good thing.
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Could you just state your name for the record?
Yes, state your name and address.
Not the address, just the name.
Dennis Matheson.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the board?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
All present voting yes.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. May I be excused? Thank you.
Bye-bye. We will move to recognitions, the first being a recognition of the county, Douglas County employee Donald Christensen, retiring from the Douglas County Engineers Office after 24 years. My understanding is David will not be with us, Donald will not be with us this morning, but we do wish him the best on his retirement and thank him for his service. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
All present voting yes.
And Commissioner Rogers? The next one is the sympathy resolution recognizing Bertha Callaway. And Commissioner Rogers, do you want to present the resolution?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I got word today from Jim Callaway that because of work, he can't make it, so he sent me a statement to read to the board for his thanks, but I'd like to read the resolution which says, "Whereas it was with great sadness that the Douglas County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of locally renowned civil rights leader and author and historian Bertha Callaway on November 25th, 2017, at the age of 93, and whereas she is survived by her son James Callaway Sr., daughter Beverly Shaw, numerous grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and sister Jeannie Rucker; and whereas Ms. Callaway was raised in Omaha and attended Creighton University; and whereas during the 1940s and 1950s Ms. Callaway became an activist for racial equality and began work to end segregation and discrimination in the United States; and whereas in 1962 Ms. Callaway organized the Negro Historical Society of Omaha; and whereas Ms. Callaway is best known for her founding of the Great Plains Black History Museum in 1976, now located at 24th and Grant Street in North Omaha; and whereas in 2016 the city of Omaha recognized and honored Ms. Callaway for her role as a civil rights activist by naming a portion of Lake Street from 22nd to 24th Street as Bertha Callaway Street; and whereas she devoted much of her life advocating for civil rights and freedoms directly impacting her community and our residents. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners in Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby commemorates the life and contributions of Ms. Bertha Callaway and does hereby formally extend this board's sincere sympathy to her family and friends." And with that, Mr. Callaway said, "Please give the families, please give the families express and families' expression and sincere thank you for honoring my mother in such a public way. I can only hope that her historic trail will lead young adults to understand and honor the treasured history. Again, I thank you and the county board for the acknowledgement." And with that, I'd move the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote. And did you want to say anything else, Commissioner Rogers?
We can get it officially stamped, and at some point, we can get one signed, and that doesn't have to be rushed whenever we get a chance to get everybody signed.
It was Mark Goodsecond before I had to...
Oh, okay, sorry. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes, I knew Mrs. Callaway and the family and wanted to express my personal condolences to them. She was a great lady and a true hero, leader of the civil rights movement here, regionally and nationally. And what she did in her life was contribute to the Omaha community in a fashion that is really unique, establishing the Great Plains Black History Museum and preserving the memory of contribution made by our African-American citizens to the building of this great community would not have been done without her. And it's with sadness that we see her pass, but it's with admiration that we pass this resolution. I commend Commissioner Rogers for drafting this and bringing it to us. Very appropriate recognition of a truly great individual.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, Bertha was a friend of our family, and my father, whenever he got anything of historical significant that dealt with North Omaha or dealt with the civil rights or the black community in Omaha, he would give it to her, never charged her for any of this stuff, and he gave her, I would guess, hundreds of documents over the course of the years. And Jim, you're right, it's not only what she did, but it's also what she had to put up with. As a black woman, growing up in Omaha, you had to put up with a lot of less than pleasant greetings. And doing this on limited, if any, budget is absolutely an amazing feat, and I strongly support this.
Thank you.
Just wait. Commissioner Morgan, lead your vote.
Oh, sorry.
You're okay.
Thank you.
And motion passes. All present voting yes.
Thank you. I would like a motion now to recess out of the county board agenda and go into the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
One moment, please. Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Rogers voting yes, as all the other commissioners are. Motion passes.
With that, could I get a roll call for the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization?
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, November 21st, 2017, and item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, December 12th, 2017, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Duda. No further questions or comments. Please vote.
All present voting yes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, there are three resolutions, and could I get a motion to approve D, E, and F and adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers and seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
All present voting yes.
Could I get a motion to reconvene into the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, please?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers?
A few seconds here, we'll be ready. All right, thank you.
Please vote.
All present voting yes.
Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, November 21st, 2017, and approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, December 5th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
All present voting yes.
Consent agenda, items A through K. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
All present voting yes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to committees, the first being the finance, the budget report as presented. There was one item under the child and youth, but that's been pulled. Some language change needs to be made. And then we'll move to human resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented, unless anyone has any questions on that report. Seeing none, the legislative issues. I just want to thank all of the senators that were able to attend our Senators' Breakfast on the 29th. It was a great meeting, good discussion, great attendance, and we look forward to working with them through this next legislative session.
One comment. I believe on January 8th, we'll be going to Lincoln for the state's...
For the tri-county breakfast, yeah.
The breakfast with the state senators.
Yep.
So it's important that we try to put that on our schedule if we can, and I plan to be there.
Yep, thank you. With that, we'll move to item three, the approval of the bank accounts for discovery benefits. Let me get to that. Matt Overly from Human Resources is here to tell us about that. Hi, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. So you know that we are switching to discovery benefits next year for our flexible spending accounts, and in order to do that, they need to have bank accounts to draw money to reimburse themselves for those funds that are put out. Essentially, what happens is we've got one bank account that holds all of the funds, and then another transactional account which they will, in essence, ping, I guess, for lack of a better term. Say we need $1,000. That $1,000 will come out, and then $1,000 will be taken from the funding account and put back into that transaction account. Pretty much standard how it's set up with Payflex right now, and just so you all know too, we're almost done with the contract as well, but they needed a little bit of extra time to get these bank accounts set up and tested so that everyone will have their cards by January 1st.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Duda. No further questions or comments? Please vote.
All present voting yes.
Next is the item four, discussion and action on the elected officials' pay increases, and Matt is here again to talk with us.
Yeah, at the last HR committee meeting, all the elected officials present felt that 4% increase was sufficient for the positions, and it also keeps pace with their generally second or third in command with a range increase of 4%. So they felt like a 4% would help to alleviate any compression issues or help, not exacerbate them, I guess, so.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Any further questions or comments? Commissioner Duda?
Excuse me for not being more, this is all the elected officials that are under consideration that is in this.
Yes.
So this includes the sheriff?
Yes.
All right. The sheriff did bring to our attention that there is a compression issue there with the chief deputy and captains making more than the sheriff. And therefore, I would like to offer an amendment to the motion that the sheriff, the salary for the sheriff gets an additional 3% the first year beyond what's listed in the resolution.
Only the first year?
The other years would remain the same. Only the first year would get an additional 3%. That would be my motion.
Commissioner Morgan?
I thought that the sheriff, Claire, and I want to hopefully be supportive of what you're doing on the sheriff, I thought he requested it go to 6%, not 7.
He did.
All right, then, then...
If you want to change that...
I will. I will. I will change it then. That's what we'll make it to. I'm sorry, I misspoke. I was thinking...
And I know we all met with him up in 903, listened and got the comparisons, so, you know, that would be my only thought. So I would second what you're doing with the 6%.
Thank you.
And that was just for the first year again?
Correct. Other years would be as...
I'm sure that every year there would be like somebody else.
As listed, yes, yes.
So is that a friendly amendment?
I hope so.
If the second?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. With that, there is a motion and a second with that amendment?
The original motion was made by Commissioner Rogers and the second was by Commissioner Duda.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Rogers, are you okay with that? Okay.
I'm sorry.
And so you got it was the additional 2% for the first year?
Yeah, for the sheriff.
Please vote.
Well, at least, give us one moment, please, and we'll get this ready.
Okay.
Motion passes. All present voting yes.
Next is a resolution setting the salaries for the county commissioners from 2019 to 2022, and I just want to note that this is a little bit different than what we've done in the past. This was brought as a suggestion by Commissioner Duda that we set the salaries this time for a four-year period and then go back to our two-year rotation thereafter. So as you see on the resolution, it'll be setting it from 2019 to 2022, and again, it is a 4% increase for all four of those years. Motion by Commissioner Duda, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Commissioner Morgan, Borgerson, and Kavanaugh voting no. Kraft, Duda, Rogers voting yes.
Okay. Is there a different motion that someone would like to offer? Seeing none, then I guess we'll table this and bring it back. We have to have this done by the end of the year, is that correct?
Yes, you need to have it done before the end of the year, so...
Okay. So we'll have further discussion on that salary and bring that back next week. With that, there is need for executive session for litigation and real estate litigation, and there are a couple notices before we adjourn. The last scheduled meeting for our board will be December 19th. The first scheduled for 2018 is January 9th. There is a committee meeting following this meeting at 1:00, the Administrative Services, and Commissioner Morgan?
While Matt's here, I just want to say I really appreciate the job you stepped into Ms. Dair's position, and you've done an outstanding job in responding. I've heard that from others. I've experienced it myself, and I just really want to compliment you on the work you've been doing. It's not the easiest task because it changes all the time with the insurance and so on, and I just want to thank you for the work that you're doing on behalf of the employees and the county.
With that, do I get a motion to go into executive session?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan? Make for litigation and real estate litigation. Is that a okay second?
Real estate negotiation.
Real estate negotiation, sorry.
One of Claire's favorite things.
Please vote.
Motion passes. All present voting yes.[1338.41]